Ladies and gentlemen, at 7 o'clock, we'll call the January 23 meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. If you'll join us, we traditionally pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Union of America. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution stands on the issue under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all. Thanks to SCTV for broadcasting the meeting and to the veterans in Simmsbury for their service. Let's do our roll call. Bill Rice is absent. He's the chair, and in his absence, I'll be the chair tonight. Alan Needham here. David Blumie here. Holly Ben.
Here.
Brittany McCormick, which is absent. Aaron Levitt Smith.
Yes, sir.
Elizabeth Byrd.
Present.
Gary Lungarino is absent. Richard Cortez.
Present.
All right, let's take a look at, oh, point him alternates. So we've got two regular members absent. How about Rich, we put you in for Bill Rice?
There you go.
Okay, and Elizabeth, we'll put you in for Craig McCormick. That gives us six regular members, too. All right, let's do the minutes. We're going to be picking some issues up in the minutes and correcting them. Mike's got some corrections. Let's go to the November 13 minutes. Mike?
So line 33 should be Richard Meehan. So change the N to an M. Line 37, again, Mr. Meehan. Line 41, Mr. Chairman Rice asked Mr. Meehan, because it was Richard and Mr. Meehan who represented the applicant. Same thing on line 42. Line 48 should be added a statement. Mr. Needham asked about if the definition of personal services in the regulations. Mr. Glidden replied, yes. Line 49 should read, Mr. Meehan. So line 52 is your motion. It should read that Mr. Rice made a motion to return a positive referral to the zoning commission and that the application was consistent with the 2017 P O C D. Ms. Smith, Levitt Smith, seconded the motion. Mr. Needham stated he was concerned on the change. The motion passed unanimously. Then line 61 should read that a candidate was interviewed for the Assistant Town Planner today. And line 62 and 63 should be deleted.
Should be deleted.
Deleted.
Okay. All right, so my understanding is we can go ahead and approve the amended minutes of the November 13 meeting based on what we just heard, and then it'll be written into the final copy. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
I second.
Second, did you get that? Holly, second. Okay, discussion. Those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. I was not present.
All right, now the January 8, 2019 minutes.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's just two or three changes. One is line 40 should read Alan J. Walden. I just wrote A.J. in there, and apologize. The other is line 41, it says JP, it should say, comma.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, I'm sorry. JP, comma, contractor for Bob Cave, comma. Then the last one is the name of the individual. You just have first name Erica on Arrowhead. I didn't get her last name in the record. I don't know if...
She's not here?
Do you know her last name?
No. Okay.
Not with me, I've got her.
That's all? That's all.
Okay, so these over page one, page two. Anybody have any issues you want to add in addition to what we just talked about? I think what we'll do is the same thing we did before, just approve the minutes as verbally amended. So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
I abstain. I wasn't present.
All right, so we're going to return to the public hearing that we began last time we met on application number 18-02, Robert Green Associates for a re-subdivision of 14 Roswell Road. So we'll continue with the public hearing. There's some information you wanted to share, photographic information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I took a few photos, just in case anyone, either the public or members of the commission, did not attend the sidewalk, just to orientate ourselves on the application. I'll put them up on the screen right now. And I'll kind of go over where I am in each location in the lot. So this photo was taken kind of where the proposed home site is, looking towards the east or the rear of the property. You recall that excavator was still there. This photo, the same location, so they apologize for the cameramanship with the little finger on top, I didn't notice that. This is kind of in that home, the house site, looking towards the existing house, just to show you the lay of the land. This is another photo. This photo is kind of at the corner. It would be the northwestern corner of the house and where the driveway meets the house, kind of looking towards the rear again. This is standing at about where the septic system will be located, looking towards the rear of the property. This is looking back from the septic system location, back towards the house lot and towards West Mountain Road to the west. This is again looking at the area towards the rear of the property, approximately a leach field, looking actually towards the south. You can kind of see in the photo the Butters house at 12 Roswell. It's kind of just the outlet of the structure is there. Again, looking back towards with the basketball hoop towards the...
Can you go back to that last one? Where is the house? Is it...
So in this photo, it would be, you barely could see it. It is on the right-hand, upper right-hand corner, probably like an inch and a half down.
Oh.
Yeah, you barely could see it, but I'm kind of trying, I was trying to look towards there just to show you, you know, kind of a 360 view.
And I think that general looks here last time.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And he did, that generally, also that neighbor attended the sidewalk, so, but I still wanted to show you the lay of the land.
Okay.
Once again, this is looking back towards the house lot. This is where the property. Oops, I'm sorry. You can see this better, better picture looking towards the house.
That's 12 Roswell?
That's 12 Roswell. This is now the existing driveway or the existing, let's call it path, going out to the road. So I'm standing in the plan, it'll be kind of just to the left of where the proposed driveway will be. And this is looking down towards West Mountain Road. This photo is 20 feet up from the edge of road. And remember, the driveway cut will be kind of off to the right of where this photo is taken. This is not where your proposed driveway will be. This is kind of looking at the road directly across the street to the driveway. This photo is looking south along West Mountain Road. It shows the slope here that will be regraded. This is looking north. You can see kind of where that, where the pole is there. There's the drainage structure that we've discussed. This is the drainage structure. It's kind of just an open head wall with a pipe that's cross culvert going underneath the road. Once again, this is kind of, this is a little further up north of the driveway cut. I wanted to document the hillside here. This is the hill that will be lowered. I'm walking now towards the intersection of West Mountain Road and Roswell.
Where was the culvert?
So that's actually, in this photo, literally behind me.
Yes.
Because I'm walking towards the intersection now. This is, once again, I just wanted to document, you see markings here. This is at the property corner of the proposed lot, looking back towards the proposed driveway. I think that's, this is just the document, I was standing at the property corner. This is just further down, going towards the intersection of Roswell. And that's it. That's all my thoughts.
So that last picture, for example, quite a bit of that soil is going to be removed, is it not?
Yeah, and actually, the applicant's agents are here to speak.
Right. So who's here for the applicant?
The four of us.
Now, SCTV has requested that if you're going to speak, that you come to here, not because there's a microphone, because it's early, but just so they can get your picture. So if you don't mind, I think, if we could just get your names?
Okay.
Okay, this Bob Cave. You're the property.
I'm the property owner, yes. This is the, this is the drainage engineer, Brian, Ryan Cullavan.
Cunningham.
Cunningham. Then we have JP Lloyd, who's the site manager, and Bob Green, who is the site engineer.
All right, so having been on the sidewalk, which I thought was pretty helpful, do any of the commissioners have any questions of Mr. Green or any of the folks here?
Well, I don't quite, because I did my own walk, because I wasn't able to go with you guys. So the driveway, though, because in looking at the driveway, the way it is now, it goes right across to the Testrements property, I mean, that goes down. So I had some concern about the grade of that driveway, and Mr. Glidden just said that the driveway isn't going to be in that exact location, because that is almost directly across. So if the water does come down, it goes right across West Mountain Road and goes down into the Testrements on West Mountain Road.
That's not going to be paid.
Right, but we don't know that. Correct, but I just wanted to give a general sense of where the driveway is going to come down. Conditions, right? But not too much. It's pretty good.
I'm Brian Cunningham, freshwater engineer, state of Connecticut, work for Robert Green Associates, 6 Old Waterberry Road in Terryville, Connecticut. The driveway is being shifted a little bit to the north from where it is today. We did that to align or tee up the intersection, so it came into the road more at a 90-degree angle, and just to give us some grade to come up to the garage from the road.
So where is that in relation to the proposed location of construction entrance? Is that...
It's the same, the same location as the...
So that's where the driveway would be?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Is it going to be in that exact location, or are you going to shift?
We're shifting the driveway where it comes out today. We're moving it to the north.
Okay, so the construction, okay.
And you're changing the grade as well of the driveway?
Yeah, it's a steep slope going up to the neighbor's property, and we had to come up to the house. So we designed it to prevent water from shooting directly into the road, and it'll be collected in a swale into that head wall that you saw here in the corner of the property, so you don't, we don't get water approaching into the roadway itself along the edge.
A swale meaning a curve, as in, you know, it's a...
Yes.
Some like...
I have a question. That's a very dangerous curve. While we were walking it, I almost became hit if a car was coming around the corner.
Right.
There were some trees near that proposed, where the proposed driveway is going to enter the roadway. What's going to be, they seem to block the view. Will those trees still be there?
No, there's, as was mentioned...
I can't imagine why they have to be graded out of there.
As was mentioned earlier, that slope was being cut back a little bit. That's, we do that so that we assure that there's sightline coming from the driveway, so that that person can see oncoming traffic, and the oncoming traffic has a chance to see that for both directions. And also, I was speaking earlier this week with the Public Works Director, and he had mentioned that he's had issues with sightlining around that corner, too. So he sounded pleased that somebody was going to come and actually do something to improve the sightline around that corner.
Would that also improve the sightline for the neighbor immediately to the north? I would think it would.
I don't know that it would have a whole lot of effect. There's a knob just to the, right on the property line, and that stays, because we couldn't grade on the neighbor's property.
Right. Any other questions?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
So I noticed that, I don't know what you call it, culvert, where the water was going to collect. I noticed that I was full of leaves and debris. Is there any, any plan, I mean, what effect does that have on water being able to run, first of all? And is there any plan for keeping that clean?
That's, that culvert is with the town right away, and the Public Works would be the ones that come and clear that out. They're aware of a culvert there, so I would suspect that can be maintained going on.
All right, when I was walking the property, I had noticed where the leach fields are going to go. And that eliminates a whole lot of vegetation between the two properties. Vegetation takes up a lot of water, helps keep that table down a little bit. With that gone in the leach field there, are you still positive that we're not going to have a bad flow onto the neighbor's yard? Because there's a lot of concern about that.
No, not the way the topography's in the area. There's a swale, natural swale today that runs around to the corner of the property. It really doesn't affect, if you're referring to those on property on, to the back on the park.
No, I'm referring on, so there was some stakes that said this was a leach field.
Yep.
And then there was like, a little bit of a step, kind of a swell, and then it went down onto a neighbor's property. It was just, I think, north of where the proposed driveway is, so that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, there's not, there's not a large change in the topography associated with that. The area that the leach fields are going into run pretty much on the same line as a contour line. We do that on purpose to, septic system needs to be leveled. And there's very little additional grading needed around the rest of that, because the septic system itself is buried. It's really kind of maintaining that existing condition.
All right. So my understanding is that you're going to follow the current topography as much as you can, so we shouldn't expect any more water going east towards the...
Correct, that's correct.
And your feeling is that the soils are such that stormwater is going to be taken care of right on site?
Yeah, it's like what we call a classification soil. It's like the best there is. It's a nice sandy gravel. There's not a lot of, you'll get a lot of water traversing the overlay.
No hard pass.
No, no, it's nice gravel.
Is that the reason why you wouldn't think there'd be any water streaming down the driveway towards the road? Is the water absorbed?
No, because we actually build, we build the driveway, there's a detail on the back of the plan that shows the road perm that we get near the end of the road, and that just diverts the water into the ditch to get to that drainage structure right off the side of the road.
So if water did go down the driveway, it would be diverted to the head?
Yes, yeah.
Do you know, it's anticipated the driveway will be paved or to be...
Um, we call it, paved?
Temporary driveway, of course, will not be.
Right, but ultimate, ultimate...
Ultimately, probably will be. It hasn't been definitely decided.
The percent grade is 12% on this driveway?
About 12, yeah.
It should be paved, then. That's, that's a steep driveway to be, a stone driveway. You'll have a washout issue, et cetera. And just maintaining it, if a homeowner were to own it in the winter, it would just be a pain to maintain. That really, at that grade, should be paved, in my experience.
So the dry well should take care of any runoff from the roof?
That's correct.
Any else have any questions? What we'll do in a minute is open it up to public comment. And if you have a comment, which is fine, of course, just run up here, please, and give us your name and address, any questions you have for the experts, but thank you, sir. Any questions you have for the experts, just to run them through the commission.
Have the square footage wise with the proposed house? Was that stated once then?
How big is the proposed house?
How big is the proposed house? Square footage wise?
Yeah, we have 600, 600 square feet per floor, so about 1,200 square feet.
Not that big a house.
Not a lot of house.
Nice is the one you fixed next door?
That looks pretty nice, too.
All right, anything from you at this point? Okay, so let's move on to public comment. If you want to say something, you're welcome to. That's why we're here. Just come up here, please, give your name and address. And if you have a question, just run it this way, I'm going to ask it.
My name is Sarah Carbonett. I'm living on 272 West Mountain Road. I'm at the property right, right next to the north. I have some questions. One question that I have is about, I know where the septic tank is going to go, they showed me. I don't know, though, I'm not educated enough to understand if it's going to have any impact on my water well. My water well is parallel to the, to the septic system, but it's toward the end of my property to the north.
So my understanding is through you, Mike, that the Farmington Valley District looks at all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the Health District has looked at the location of the septic in your well, and they're satisfied that that's not going to be...
So they did look at that?
It's covered by the Connecticut Health Code, you know, septic.
So if I have any questions I should ask from the Health?
Farmington Valley Health District.
Okay. The other question is about driveway. My, erroneously, I assumed in the last meeting that the driveway was going to be moved down south instead of north, so now it's moving toward my property. And you, I cannot talk right now, I got to talk to you.
I can hear you.
So it was stated that there's going to be some clearing, what, toward my property. Hopefully, they would improve the possibility, but I don't think so, because there's some trees over there that are on my property, and so they have no rights to touch my trees unless I agree with it, okay? So I would like to understand a little bit of how far north it's going to go, the exit of the driveway, and if this is going to have any impact on my property. That's a second question. And then I have a comment about, do you...
Let's answer your question, so we don't get lost.
Oh, yes.
So can somebody give him an answer to the question, like maybe, how much you're moving it, or whatever you think's appropriate?
Just show the map.
We prepared a sketch, a low-end sketch, that shows some of the markers that you saw on your field block, and their number, and I don't know how to show you exactly where they are.
Show, show us, Joe.
This is where the septic system's going. We're not, this is your property line.
Right.
Running up here, your stone wall. We're not going anywhere near that. This is just showing some of those trees that we had to take out to, just to put the system in, and then we regrade it, you know, and plant grass on top. And the clearing limits come toward your property line here, near the roadway, and that's because we're building the driveway, and we have that slope coming down. So that's why.
So where, right now, you have a pathway, let's call it a pathway. How far north, how much, how many feet is going to be moved toward that you want?
Oh, it's about 12 feet, the width of the driveway.
So it's going to be good, put it very close to my...
Very close.
Very close to my property.
It's another 12 feet closer from where it intersects the road today to where we're proposing to put that driveway. And that's, again, that's so that...
What are the regs? 10 feet for driveway to property?
There's no setback in the regs for driveways to residential?
Original name?
No.
But it is south of the culvert?
They could.
It's, no, it's north of the culvert.
It's north.
The culvert's on the property line, essentially.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little bit on our side. And then there's a gap of, I don't have the plan here, but it's probably 15, 20 feet. And then you have the driveway, which is another 12, and then the existing driveway right next to it. It goes up on that angle, so if you're looking back over your shoulder to see, it's not a really ideal condition for the driveway.
This is the property line, my property line over here. This is my lot.
Okay.
How far is the driveway going over here?
Let me look at a different set of planes, and I'll tell you.
Because my driveway is, my driveway roughly is here.
So you're on the other side of your lot.
Why don't you, my driveway, see if you can get an answer to that question. What's your last question, sir?
Oh, my, there was a comment about the water running pipe over there, you know, about responsibility was cleaning out. That's not a good method, so that thing is always full of leaves and towns on that end of the road. So some, some provision there to be taken up, I've got one of those in the corner of my lot, and they show occasionally. And you clean it, you clean, or is the neighborhood cleaning it?
No, the town, they clean it. Not every year.
Okay.
Yes, the answer to the question.
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the driveway.
For the maintenance of the catch basin. The town, actually, under our stormwater permit with the state of Connecticut, we are required to actually inspect and investigate all the culverts or drainage structures in town once, within once in a 10-year basis, but however, those that are, that are in within what's considered the urban area, we have to do that on a 2-year basis. So, yeah, DPW tries to get to all of these, and they will. This is so I can refer, I will inform Tom Loy of the buildup of leaves out there and to say, hey, could you get the crew out there to clean this one? It looks like it's, hasn't been on your cleaning list in a while.
I'm pretty sure, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, excuse me. There's a difference between maintenance and an inspection. If they're going to have an open culvert like that, the town should be maintaining that twice a year minimum. It doesn't take a long time to get in there with one of those vacuum trucks and clean it out.
Yeah, I see them, they, when they're coming with the vacuum or whatever, I'm sure that...
Can you get your answer about shifting the driveway?
No, I didn't get an answer. Okay, so this is my, my property line, and that's where...
Yep, so...
That's where the trees, they are, right here.
Yep, yeah, we're about, we're about 30 feet from the property line, and that's where the culvert is.
Yeah.
So almost, and this distance from this little square is a highway monument...
Yeah.
...to your property line is 37 feet, so it's about the distance from, if you were to find that stone, it's about that distance on the other side of the property corner.
So the same distance.
Yeah, but it's okay.
All right.
Anything else, sir?
No, thank you.
Good, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak during the talk about, just, give your name and address, please?
My name is Mark, I live at 275 West Mountain.
My name is Mark. I live at 275 West Mountain, directly across the street from the property. And I have two concerns. One is that, that culvert isn't anyway sort of protected from the leaves clogging it. It's part, I believe, of a larger system that has a storm drain on the opposite side of the street. And I'm pretty sure they both connect to a pipe that goes under a portion of my yard that's in between, well, the part of my yard that's closest to my neighbor, George Cleat. And it goes down toward the edge of our property lines and merges out there. I think it needs to be maintained and I had called the town and asked them to come out and look at it. And they said they thought it was fine. But the topography of my yard has changed over the last few years. Which leads me to believe that it is not in optimal condition. That doesn't mean that it's going to be in any different condition based on the construction project across the street. Because I don't know there's going to be more water. But it means that it probably, if there is more water, it would, you know, be a problem that would, that would become more manifest certainly to me as my yard continues to change shape. However, my primary interest in, in the construction project is traffic. And it's the safety around that corner. I don't know if you noticed as you were walking around, besides the hazard of walking there. But on the hillside there, my wife pointed out, there's still remnants of other accidents. There's a piece of a bumper on the hillside and other things that, I don't even know when those accidents happen. Because they happen and then they get cleaned up and they're gone by the time I get home from work. But I'm interested in the, in the way that the regulation of 200-foot sighting from the driveway. I presume that what this means is that someone leaving that driveway would be able to look both ways and see 200 feet so they could safely exit their driveway.
I believe, check me out, I think the 200 feet is for roads and not driveways.
Oh, no, no, I mean from the driveway, in other words, as you're, as you're exiting the proposed driveway. If you look to the left, you should be able to see 200 feet. And if you look to the right, you should be able to see 200 feet. Is that not?
That's based on.
The ordinance?
The, well, one, the 200 feet is based on what they're showing. Two is on the ordinance, this is considered a driveway under the highway, highway standards, don't have a sightline requirement for a driveway, unlike a road. It just says reasonable distance. So in this case, this was the reasonable distance based on the regrading, removal of vegetation along the frontage on West Mountain Road to provide safe access in and out of this, this property. So it meets the highway standards for a driveway.
Well, but who defines reasonable?
The commission does not. This is, yeah.
Well, I can tell you, living across the street where my driveway is almost directly across from this driveway, I have superior sightlines and I still don't like it. When I look to the, to the right or the south on West Mountain, I can't see the intersection of Roswell because it's hidden by the curb and the grave. And when I take that left, I have to punch it and clear out quickly and hurry down West Mountain because somebody will be coming up around behind me rapidly. As I think I said in my earlier comments to the committee, when I was teaching my children to drive, I said, you don't take that left, you take the right and find another way to go where you want to go. Because it just takes an experienced driver to do that. The, the coming out of that driveway, it's even a more challenging task going either way. And I think that what would be reasonable for this proposed driveway would be that there's a sightline that, that allows that person both to be seen and to see all the way up the road to Roswell. Which means that, that grade doesn't, the grade of the property coming down to the road isn't just cut back a little bit, it's cut back fairly dramatically and fairly low. So that that person in the driveway is both visible to the traffic as they come around the corner and also that they can see the traffic. And, you know, as I, as I said, I've lived there 20 years. I'm not going to live there another 20. There'll be somebody else, there'll be other people with it in Mississauga. But I, I really feel that this is a, you're making a, what I consider a fairly problematic corner into a more hazardous one with this driveway, both for the property owner, prospective property owner, but also for people who use this road as that person rightfully exits and enters the property. And I, I really think that if there was a way for the committee to consider an alternative for the use of this property and if there's any way that the driveway could instead be, be extended to which at Roswell, makes that out on that road in a safer way, that would be a much better use of, of, I think, this property having a safe way onto the road without increasing the hazard. I know that I've seen other properties in the neighborhood over on a couple of adjoining roads that do have these driveways that go, you know, behind the, the property that's in the front to a property in the back. And I think that's really an alternative. I don't know if Mr. Cave and his group considered it, but to me that would be a safer way of allowing the use of this property, which I endorse the use of the property. I think it's a reasonable thing to do. I just am concerned about the safety of that driveway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, is that being on the scope of our authority to require something like that?
Yeah, it's pushing the limits. I mean, you, I guess maybe you can ask the engineer of record to discuss how much grade they're taking out right now versus what's existing? Maybe that could clarify and also give his opinion on that it's, whether it's a safe entrance on the record as the professional, the engineer of record. Beyond going to that level of, that's a massive earth excavation, which will raise a lot of other issues like, such as drainage leaving the site, now flooding that corner. You may have improved your sightline and made it to zero, however, you now create an issue where you have a constant icing problem along the road because you've created now a different drainage pattern where the site now is all going. Instead of going in one little concentrated corner, either the existing driveway, the existing car path, let's call it, opening or the proposed driveway. But I defer to the, the engineer on this to maybe, I don't know, I mean to put words in the commission's mouth on that.
No.
No.
On sheet 305, you see a grading plan. If you look at the driveway, we're showing two, one in each direction, but 200-foot sightlines from the driveway. That meet town requirements for a town road intersecting another town road. So we have a driveway here, not much traffic. We're cutting back, right today, that slope comes down right to the edge of the road. And we're putting, call it like a snowshoe, about an eight foot wide, we're, we're moving that toe of the slope, the bottom of the slope, about six, maybe eight feet in, closer to the driveway where that curve comes around. So, and then we're sloping up at, up to the, moving the ridge line back a little bit. So when somebody's coming around the corner, they're going to see, somebody on the road is going to see a whole lot better for number one. But number two, when they come around that corner, they'll see the car coming out of the driveway. The car coming out of the driveway can see in each direction in excess of the requirement for even a town road. So I think when you look at what's out there today, yeah, it's a little spooky. But using our engineering judgments, we have made significant amounts of removal of material and vegetation to create an improvement of this section of the roadway for the users of the roadway and for the driveway, obviously. That's, that's what I have.
Can I ask you a question? I, I can't read these gradient lines. And so I, I see it going down to the road. What are those first two, how high are those first two cuts from the road? Okay, these, here, this. I'm trying to, I, it appears that you've got, you're cutting into the, you're cutting into the existing.
That's correct.
Okay, so how high up is the shelf, are you saying? Is that, is it at road level?
The, the snowshoe actually is a little bit lower than that. Again, you get some of that water off, allow the water to flow down.
Oh, okay, that, I wasn't sure. That's what I was trying to figure out. Is, so, so that will be all visible from the road. So you're saying this, this portion here is at road level?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so.
Actually, yeah, and those are, each of those solid lines, that's a contour line, those are contours in two-foot increments.
That's what I was trying to find out. Okay, so, so even the next few high are still going to be able to see the car.
Right, you'll be looking over, you won't be looking, you'll be able to see a lot more.
That's a much better.
Because they're sitting there about three and a half feet above the ground level. And you want to be able to see another car coming, that's three and a half feet high.
It's an improvement for travelers on the road.
Absolutely.
I take it from your comments, hopefully this, as after the grading is done, it constitutes a safe driving situation for the person on the road and the person on the driveway.
And it's in accordance with the town regulations for a town road intersecting another town road.
Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to make that?
Good evening. Hey, we're on 12 Roswell Road. I also have another comment about this, the road situation. One of the things, I don't know if you've taken into account the speed that those cars travel on that, on that, on that corner. People go by there, especially in the commuting hours, summertime with motorcycles and sports cars. You hear them racing through those corners. And I don't know, it probably goes 45, 50. Not that I've done it, but. Just kidding, because I stopped for Roswell, so I'm going to slow it. But, no, they, it's really scary. You stand down there along that, where that, where the existing driveway is at commuting time and it shocks you how fast people are going. And I don't know if you can get enough of the sightline for a 50 mile an hour car to see somebody pulling in a truck. That's my comment and observation.
Thank you.
I do have a question about the water on my property. I live on 12, adjacent to the property. And I know that your soil is the best soil ever known to man, but on my property, there's clay and rock. And where my septic leach field is, is in a low part of my property, but it's the only place to put a leach field. It was the highest of the lowest part, put it that way. And it's very fragile. And I'm just worried that placement of the, what do you call it, the splash pan for the dry well?
The dry well, yeah.
And then there's a splash pan that's going to.
That's the foundation drain.
There's a, I thought there was a splash pan. There's a splash pan for where the leers go into the dry well. And then in case the dry well can't handle it, it goes out to what I think was called the splash pan. I think when I looked at it.
It's called splash pans.
Yeah. And then addition to that, which I just learned this weekend, and I might have missed it if it was presented before, is that there is a proposal for a French drain or a foundation drain. And that water is going to be pumped out to that same general area.
It's supposed by gravity, but yeah.
It's going to go by gravity, it's not going to be pumped up? The thought.
It may, depending on the, I'm sorry, Bob Green, man?
Yeah.
It may, just based on the elevation of the house and the height of the foundation. So it may have to be pumped, it may not. You may not need one based on the soils.
So it may be pumped closer to my property, which is uphill from my leach field?
It's going to go at that same point regardless.
Because my leach field runs within 10 or 12 feet of the property line.
Yes.
So I still, I still question the impact on my septic system.
So again, the Health District looked at the impact of this project on all the septics in the area. We should take some comfort in that.
I did at my house.
Yeah, these, these plans were forwarded to the Health District and they, they granted a favorable recommendation on the approval said it demonstrated compliance to BEA 100. And then also in their review, usually it's impact to the area and the cost of, you know, reset served by onset utilities. So they, these things are considered. And they did not just get plans for the septic, they have development plans. So they, the development plans included the drainage features, et cetera. So that was.
So they would take into consideration drainage and how it might affect the leach field? Okay.
So it has been evaluated by the Health District, which we're pretty sure, yeah. You can always ask them if you need it in the DCS. They've looked at what is proposed and your septic.
And is that with relationship to the new septic? A relationship to my septic or a drainage from these?
With keeping in mind everything they're doing, drainage, their septic, everything.
Anything that would be, anything that was subject to the Connecticut State Health Code, that's when we're looking at it. So, yeah.
So I can be guaranteed that my system won't be affected at all?
I think you should call the Farmington Valley Health District and ask them what their process is and evaluate it for yourself.
We're not in a position to.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. I just want to go on record.
I, I think you should be very assured. And they assured me and I asked a couple of questions, I felt assured. I hope you could too.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't know. That'll do it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes.
I'm George Cleat, 269 West Mountain Road. And I live across the street from Mr. Carbonne and I live north of Mr. Testament. I would say probably in the last 15 years, two people died on that road. Not, not very far from where we are, probably 100 yards from our property here. It's very, very important that this be taken very seriously about that curve. Cars go up and down, believe me, they're going 50 miles an hour, that slope. Please patrol it. They don't have control of the situation. I don't know what the answer is, but I think that of all the things that are being considered here, probably the excess driveway to the highway is one of the most important features because we've got human lives involved. Also, a problem of water, seeping. I border Mr. Testament's property and at the corner of his property west, I have a pond right in back of my house and there's a runoff, real quite, that goes parallel with Mark's property. There is some very large pieces of trap rocks, look like trap rock material, that have been laid there. I don't know what the history of it is, but apparently they've been put there to handle runoff that comes off of the street. Isn't that right, Mark?
That's correct.
So that's another, that's another issue. I'm probably going to be getting more water here. I'm probably going to be getting more water here. But I think I want to emphasize again, the security of that highway. In my situation, I had a car, just a couple of years ago, with teenagers, knocked down a couple of trees in front of the house, came and flipped over all the glass out, and it was probably 15 feet from my, from my kitchen windows. My wife was picking a hair out of the kids', was picking a glass out of a lot of the kids' hair, quite the scene. And I'm sure that you'll give it your very serious attention, and good luck with it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Well, we can't always... May I ask whether, in the layout of the house and the driveway, you considered alternatives to the driveway? Having been on the property, it's, it seems natural to have to follow that, that path that's there now. But as people have observed, the, because of the cornering, need to give consideration to another approach, bringing the driveway in from a different direction.
One alternate that we looked at was to try to move the driveway to the south end of the property, and bring it into the, the house site area. With the curves pretty uniform through there, so sightline issue is gonna be the same for either, either location. But to get the, the hills, the distance to the house is less, and I, we couldn't get a decent slope and alignment for this driveway to come in. Yeah, you want to come in at close to 90 degrees to the road, so that you can turn in from either direction, or turn out going either direction. And it just, it just got into a lot more earthwork, removal of even more soil to get into that site. That berm goes up to a high elevation of about 606 or so. The house is about 10 feet, as proposed anyways, is about 10 feet lower than that. So there's this berm in front of the house, that we would have to cut across to get to a site for the house. And that's why we reverted back to the old farm path for a driveway location, and managed to get our grades and alignment to work at the proposed location.
Thank you. I was about to say, we always give the applicant a chance for rebuttal, but they're kind of going on here as we think. Anything else from the applicant?
First of all, thank you very much for coming out. I'm not sure how you kept the weather good Saturday, but Sunday, I'm glad, we didn't plan it for, anyway. I've gotten to know a lot of my neighbors, they're all here tonight. We've had a lot of talks as this process has been going, and a lot of their suggestions have gone into the planning. So some of the things that you've heard and seen are things that they've actually kind of suggested to us, so we're trying to take their comments into it. I've had a lot of conversations with the town about the road, and this was a suggestion that came back to us. And as you've heard several times, the 200 foot was, is something that is standard and it's reasonable, and it's gonna work, and we hope it's gonna work. It's gonna be better than it is now. And I think that's important, as you, as you consider this, because it's, how much better can we make it? I, I don't know. We've heard there, we've picked the best location. The interesting thing is, that was a road that was put in to get into that site, and so it's been there a long time. I don't have any rebuttal. I just have a, a plan that I'd really like to have you consider, and we put a lot of effort into it, and we hope that you will do so. Thank you.
Mike, just while we're still here, what's the input from the town engineer project?
He was in favor. He didn't have any concerns with this. I reviewed the driveway and drainage proposals. No issues.
Okay. Okay, well, it sounds like everybody's had their turn. Maybe we can close the public hearing? There are motion to close the hearing?
Some.
Second? Who did that?
They did.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Well, going down the agenda, what's next is what was last. One of the things, it's never good to make a negative motion, because if the negative motion fails, is that not what you said yes, or what you said no? So what we're gonna suggest is that we have a motion, I think staff has prepared one so we get the legalities right. And let's understand, it's for discussion purposes only. Okay? So it'll be a motion to approve. And that doesn't mean you have to approve. Okay? It means it takes us to the part of the meeting where we can debate this and talk about it. So it's just for discussion purposes only. So do you have that motion?
Attachment A, it's on my staff report. It's a motion, affirmative, with five conditions of approval. I can read them for the record.
Wait, let us find it first. Where is it?
It's on my staff, it's attached to my staff report. It should be in the, should be in the packet.
This packet?
Yeah. So...
So this will be our motion?
Yeah, it's approval based on the plans titled re-subdivision Stanwood subdivision, map A16 block 307, lot 15, owned by Robert Cave, prepared by Robert Green Associates. Revision dated December 12, 2018. Re-subdivision approval subject to the following conditions of approval. One, prior to filing of plans, all property corners be marked as indicated on the approved plans. Applicants provide written correspondence of licensed surveyor that markings have been installed in accordance with approved plans. Two, applicant is to prepare two sets of MYLARs of sheets two of five, three of five for signature of chairman. One set is to be filed in land records with town clerk. Second set is to be provided to the engineering department.
Michael, where are you? We can't find what you're reading. We can't find what you're reading or what it tells us.
My staff report, it's dated...
What does it look like? Hold it up, so we can see what we're looking at.
It's exhibit 15.
Okay.
It's the third page.
Three.
Go to page...
Six.
Sorry, page four. The front looks like this.
Oh, can I have a hand?
It's dated December 31, 2018.
Turn the page, go to the fourth page. Keep flipping. Go there. Keep...
The motion is on the fourth page.
Yep. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I know.
Sorry. No, it's okay. Condition number three, erosion instead of the control plans are approved as submitted. Condition number four, a fee of $2,500 is approved for the open space requirement. Condition number five, after filing the MYLARs, a notice of caveat for the land records is to be filed, the Sinsbury Town Clerk, for open space fee associated with proposed lot. Fee for open space is to be paid at the time of transfer of title for the lot. And attached to this is just an example of what the notice of caveat will be for this property. It cites the map number for the proposed lot, that it was approved by the planning commission. The chairman would sign this, and then Mr. Cave would sign this, be notarized, it's filed in the land records. This is similar to what we did with Old Farms recently, and Hoskins. The Hoskins had the two lot re-subdivision, Old Farms had the one lot re-subdivision. Same thing, that since they did a fee and move open space, this is, consider like a lien, it's filed in the land records, and then at time of transfer, this pops up as you owe, you have to pay the fee.
That would be the motion. Clear on that?
Yep.
Okay, I'll give a second?
Second.
Okay. Now let's discuss.
In order to, for the discussion, Mike, can I have another peek at your map?
Yeah.
That you showed, the same...
You want the large map?
Yeah.
Okay, so we did side walk, because we don't do it very well. Very helpful.
Thank you.
We turn up to the neighbors, which is equally helpful, rightfully. What do we think of this? Anybody got any comments, want to start? I'll start. The town engineer didn't find any issues with it. My understanding of the testimony we heard today is that the sightlines, while not ideal, are improved by this project. I don't think we want to take that berm and cut it way down, because then we're gonna end up with water issues, so. Anybody else have any comments? Mine are generally positive.
There are two things that, while I appreciate the comments from the public, are way outside of our authority. One is policing the speed on that road. Only the police department can do that, that shouldn't be part of our consideration. The sightline has been improved to the point that it can be improved. And the other thing is maintenance on the culvert, that's a town issue, that's not a planning commission issue. If something needs to be done there, then the town highway department needs to deal with that. That's also outside of purview.
We can't do anything about it, but it was worthwhile.
No, absolutely. And the appropriate, people should be notified of that. It's just not within our, we can't police the speed of people driving down that road. That's, the police need to be there, they need to stop cars, they need to give them tickets. Nothing we can do about that.
Yeah, I don't, you know, if I can just say, I don't think that was the point from what I, I think they were just bringing up that, that is, I know, because I travel that road every day, multiple times a day, people do speed, and I, I think it was worth just mentioning that, is 200, the way I looked at it was, is 200 feet enough for that, given that people's speed? I didn't hear anybody saying do something with speed, it was just bringing it to our attention that...
We can't require the property owners to do something because...
Just let me, can I, no, but I, I don't think, the way I interpret it, I think they were saying, is that enough to mitigate how fast people go, and with the accidents? I, that's how I took, I agree, there's, you know, we're not, I didn't think that they were asking that.
So with regard to the sightlines, it does meet regulation, and it is an appropriate, I think that's the takeaway for me. Anybody else have anything?
Well, I think, I think one of my concerns, what I, I think Mr. Cunningham addressed, is that even if you're coming around and you're blocked going around the curb, there's enough feet, if somebody was coming out the driveway, that you wouldn't hit.
Because that was one of the questions, and you very nicely answered that. So it's, it's a tough corner, it's, I...
I just wanted to say I'm not unsympathetic. Trying to stick to what we're saying.
And I'm not either. I mean, I look at, I wanted to see the big map, just to see where that 200 line came out. And it's a good question. Is that enough for the speeds? But the issue is, that's not something we get to answer, because if everything's being followed by the rules, there's no variance requested, with the Farmington Valley Health Association says the drainage is proper, if the town engineer says the sightlines are proper, we're really not in a position to override any of that. But I do, I do, that's a good question. And this is something that I hope, and Mike is young, will have him here for several years. You know, as things come up, and as, because this came up, this is obviously not the first time we've had an issue with sightlines, and with corners and with high traffic, and they've gotten overruled on our concerns. But it is a good question. When you don't have good visibility, what happens? Is 200 feet really enough? And I, I share the concern, because that sightline is right at the bend, you know, so someone coming barely down, you're right. If they're not trying to change, text somebody, they should be able to see that car, but it's out of our purview to know whether or not that's gonna happen, or whether or not those regulations are gonna have to be...
And we should talk to the people that write the regulations.
Exactly. And that's not us.
Which, just as an aside, not related to this, but obviously, the town engineer was planning on updating the highway standards, so, and that was in our, the capital improvement plan last year. And there's money set aside to do that work, which is, that is a project, one of many, that is on the horizon, so that's something that will be updated. But right now, as Chairman Needham said, I mean, it meets the standards for locating a driveway. So this is an administrative function to the commissioner, where you demonstrate compliance.
And you know, even, even under good situations around a curve, I, I live on a road with no traffic whatsoever, someone almost died in my front yard. I mean, we, we were, we were certain the guy was dead, you know, and he walked away magically.
That's a good background.
With the Farmington Valley, with the, when they went out, do they actually test? Like, what are...
When you do septic, they, the applicant will go out, they'll dig a hole, and they basically pre-soak the hole, and it's a perk test. It's looking at the, the performance of the, of the soils, in order to design a system within the soil.
So they are taking practice, okay.
So in this case, if the soils were not optimal, let's say that they were a hard pan, or you had a restrictive layer within, within, let's say, 18 to 24 inches in surface soil, they may do a different, not a conventional system, but a fill system, for some other sort of high-performance system, where then, yeah, you look at that and say, well, there's a red flag. In this case, they're, they're going right into native elevations, based on the test bit data, based on the perk tests that they did, and they said that this looks like it's a, it's a situation of onsite soils, where you have suitability for performance of the system within the existing grades. Does that make...
It does. I guess, so a follow-up question would be, but they're only doing it on that soil, they're not going into neighboring properties to check? So it's just based on...
Then it's just proximity to property, et cetera, with all your features associated with the development of the property, and placement of your well, to make sure, like, you know, that, that doesn't have a negative influence.
Okay.
Michael, I have a question about that. In their letter, they say, based on soil test data and the above referenced plans, this is the letter from Farmington Valley Health. Did Farmington Valley Health do tests, or are they relying on the tests?
They supervise when you do, they'll, they'll go, they'll supervise the actual tests. They don't do the tests. The applicant agents and the professional engineer, they may witness the test, or they may get the, the information from the agent of the applicant. They don't do the tests themselves.
So they actually may not have ever looked at this property?
Oh, they'll look at the soils. They'll look at the soils, and they, they'll supervise it.
They look at the soils onsite, or they look at the soils back in the lab?
Onsite.
Onsite.
Onsite. You dig the hole, you soak it, they'll come out, they'll meet with you, and they'll start watching the measurements to see how it goes.
All right, so they actually go to the, okay.
Okay, somebody else have any comments? So if we were to, if when we vote on this, do you think it's necessary to reread the motion?
You could refer to attachment A and the staff reporting the motion.
Everybody okay with that?
Rather than, if you're okay with all the conditions, if you want to add something to it? Staffs could add anything?
Do we want to add anything about in compliance with the 2017 P O C D?
That isn't really what this is. This is our subdivision hat.
It's a regulatory hat. This is, yeah, usually that's when you're wearing your advisory hat to the various...
For reference.
Yeah. It seems like we do that more than this, this activity.
Is the assurance, Mike, that the grading will be done by referencing the, the sets of the MYLARs, that, so this is what will be done?
And, and the revision dates, that's why that first sentence refers to the title and revision date. So, yeah, you made your motion based on that set, so that's what you filed as final approvals, and then at the same time, when... final approvals, and then at the same time, when, when an if building permit comes in for that house, say, say this is approved, they're going to be held to the erosion sediment control plan, the limits of disturbance, the, the grading is shown on those plans.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So then for person of discussion, we have a motion read by Mr. Glin. We're using a district motion, okay? That we can vote on yea or nay. It's already been moved and seconded.
You made the motion and seconded it. Sorry, I didn't hear the minutes.
Did I?
I think, I think I lied. I think...
Aaron read the motion?
Oh, did I?
Mr. Bloom, you did. Wow. I did not second that, this particular one, but if you need a second, uh...
I thought you did, and then I said it.
Maybe I did.
You did it.
Chair can make that motion.
I believe I made it. Aaron seconded it.
Very perfect.
Thank you, just for clarifications.
Okay, we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion as read by Mr. Glin, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the ayes have. Thank you for coming. Okay. New applications to the tournament?
Nothing new.
Item six, Bill would like to be relieved of his obligation to have CROD meetings. I support once. It is kind of interesting. It isn't something that I feel... Is there anybody else that's interested? I'll tell you, as far as I know, this is what's involved.
I am interested, but I, but I have looked at the dates, and I would miss multiple of the dates, so becoming the representative and then not being there doesn't, it seems to me the wrong way to go.
How many of what dates?
At last time, it was passed out the, the dates of the CROD meetings.
Right, and there's five dates?
There are five dates.
And you'd miss...
I'd missed the one in March. I'd missed the one in May, the next two. So while I...
But you could make the other three?
Well, the other one is behind us.
They're in September and November. My calendar is not so active that I have filled up my September and November dates yet. I'm scheduled to have a shoulder replacement in November, but, so I, I'm interested, but I, I don't think I can make the meetings.
Half of them.
I, I think I could make some of them.
Oh, were we appointing a representative and an alternate? I thought that was one of the...
One, one time we did it, we did that. We had a representative and alternate, and another time it was like, who's available? I like the who's available one, so.
But then, that means the person has to call everyone.
Yeah, that's right. And it's not me, that's why I like it. So let's see.
I'm interested in, maybe we could, between the two of us? I think I'd be more inclined to make the first two than the, the second two.
I definitely can't make the March, and I can't make the May.
And I'm pretty sure I can make both of them.
Okay, it's done. Mr. Bloom will be the representative, you'll be the alternate.
Okay, the alternate will be, okay, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Oh, no, then you're good.
He's just giving advice.
Holly's cell phone number to remind her to go.
Okay, you all right with that? Even though you got beaten into it? That's a record show. He was beaten into submission on this.
Although it could be that...
Don't punish me a quarter if I can get him recorded.
But even when you're so, it's not an emergency, is it? I might be one.
That's true. It has been recorded, that I, that I said I'm, I'm willing, but make all that I can do. Yeah, okay. Yes?
Afterwards, we'll exchange numbers.
We have our volunteers with a small V.
Is that the only time about?
Anything else somebody wants to bring up before I get more trouble?
Did you get my message about March 23rd?
I did.
Awesome, okay.
Before we...
No, I know, that's exactly, I was so nervous.
You're all set. The, except for the...
I can't, so I have to go to a...
The thing that was there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's still on the docket, if anybody wants to go.
Love it, it's good.
Yeah, it is good. I'm sorry to miss it.
Mike knows that I've signed up to go.
I got you. Yes, yes, Holly, yes. Right? Did you sign up?
This is just two days after the first meeting in West Hartford.
I arrived, I'm skiing that entire week. I arrived before your shoulder replacement.
Oh, that's why, the shoulder replacement.
Of the March 21st.
All right, let's wrap this.
I make a motion to wrap it up. Bye, second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.